...meeting for Monday, September eighth, two thousand and twenty-five. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nicky, can I get a roll call, please?
Mayor King?
Here.
Councilwoman Nyner?
Here.
Councilwoman Newberry?
Here.
Councilwoman Emo?
Here.
Councilwoman Doomer?
Here.
Corn being present, if all members have had a chance to review the agenda as presented, are there any objections to the agenda as presented? Hearing no objections, the agenda is approved by unanimous consent. If councils had an opportunity to review the consent agenda, are there any objections to the consent agenda as presented? Hearing no objections, the consent agenda is approved by unanimous consent. First order of business tonight would be a public hearing. Need a motion to go into public hearing for Bill number twenty-five dash three-one, a proposed ordinance of the city of Pleasant Hill, Missouri, repealing certain sections of chapter two forty of the Pleasant Hill Code of Ordinances relating to the development of land and enacting and in lieu of, therefore, new articles to be known as the Unified Development Code of the City of Pleasant Hill, Missouri.
I'll take a motion to go into public hearing.
I'll second.
Have a motion, a second to open a public hearing. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilwoman Nyner?
Yes.
Councilwoman Newberry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Emo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Doomer?
Yes.
All right, we are in a public hearing. All right.
Thank you, Mayor. As most of you know, for the last three years, we've been working on the Unified Development Code. This will be a new development code for the city to implement. First, I want to take a minute to thank Planning and Zoning for all of their time and effort. They have spent the last six to seven months going through this code line by line, chapter by chapter. So, thank you all for your time and dedication for that. What is the Unified Development Code? The Unified Development Code gives guidance for development and protects the public investments. So, any development within the city of Pleasant Hill follows these guidelines, whether it's commercial or residential. It provides common framework for land use development so that all development is under the same rules and regulations. It promotes development and shapes the appearance of the community. This also aligns with our two thousand and forty comprehensive plan. This was suggested by that. So, why update UDC? To implement quality development regulations to provide staff, planning and zoning, and council with development guidelines. Recommendation, it was a recommendation with the two thousand and forty comprehensive plan to review and update our development codes and also pressure from the development community as there have been issues and concerns with our current two thousand and eighteen development code. This is a time, a review timeline. It's a short one. I say short. You'll see that this review actually started in September of two thousand and twenty-two. There have been multiple reviews with both staff, multi-studio staff, legal council, and planning and zoning throughout these months. You can tell there's been a lot of time and effort put into this development code. The recommendation is from Planning and Zoning Commission, voted, voted following the public hearing until on September second, two thousand and twenty-five, with a three to one vote to recommend approval of the final draft of the United, of the Unified Development Code, also known as the UDC, to city council. Staff for a commensurate approval of Unified Development Code to be included by October first, two thousand and twenty-five. The delayed implementation is a request so that it allows staff time to adequately make sure that all of our applications, forms, and requirements are in order before we implement the development.
Ready?
That's it.
All right. This time, I will open the floor. If there's anyone from the public that would like to speak at this hearing on Bill twenty-five dash three-one, please step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, Mr. King. My name is Chris Livingston, and my address is six eleven Hickory Hills Drive, Pleasant Hill. I just wanted to thank you guys for this opportunity that you gave us on this project. It's been a long six months at it, but we got it done. And thank you all for being supportive of this and trusting us with this. Like I said, it was not an easy, easy thing. I mean, a lot of pages to cover and, and I personally want to thank our planning and zoning members. Sarah Carver Lo, Mike Collier, Kathy Gilbert, Dan Matouche, Ryan Bunch, and City Councilwoman Michelle Newberry, thank you for your doing a double duty for the last six months. And I know it wasn't easy on it, but I think what we've got here, we've got something that we can really move forward with and make Pleasant Hill one of the best, you know, cities around here in the Kansas City area. Also like to thank our lawyers for overseeing and looking it all over for us to make sure that we were abiding by the rules and guidelines and all the recommendations. We took to heart and got it all figured out. Also with the multi-studio, you know, they, we get them hard with a lot of things, a lot of changes, and I just wanted to thank them for being with, there with us for the last six months. And we're excited to see the city grow and do it the right way where things will be legit and make Pleasant Hill the town that it is. And I just want to say thank you again for trusting us.
Thank you.
Oh, one more question, sorry. And Missy, she was the backbone behind all this. She worked endlessly on this, and she deserves a lot of this credit with a lot of questions and think, you know, re-typing up, checking, she spent a Sunday evening on Labor Day weekend reading all hundred and eighty-eight pages to make sure it was all, you know, she found a few misspelled words and spend her holiday weekend reviewing hundred and eighty pages is a commitment to the city. So, thank you, Missy.
Anyone else?
John Sub, two oh five South Campbell. Do have a little bit here. I'm going to ask a little bit of grace on your part if I run over my three minutes, but I will try to keep it brief. And I would, I'd like to ask you to remember what drove you to run for council and not to vote with your friends, but ask, listen to us as your neighbors, as the people that live with you while you think about what we had to say tonight. How many of you have read the UDC in its entirety?
I have.
Okay, so Brenda, you read the cover, covering? Okay.
I've read a hundred and sixty-eight pages with a hundred and ninety-one.
I tried twenty pages and I, but I couldn't write this through. The final version of the UDC has been cryptically released to the public at best. I called Missy on eight twenty-five requesting a final version. She told me that she would notify me when she had one. On nine-two, the day of the meeting, I still had not been notified of the availability of the final draft, even though it had been included in the packet for the meeting. Neither the agenda nor the packet made mention of this, and there was no other public release of the final version or a redlined version that compared the new version to the old one. The agendas for the meetings had only the direction to inquire at City Hall handwritten on them if you attend the meeting. That's not what was published on the website. That's far different from what I was told, and it's far different from what was published, which was nothing. These were not available to the public until City Hall had closed for the day on Friday. Monday was a holiday. That left people with eight hours to find a copy of this hundred and eighty-eight page document to try and review it before the planning and zoning meeting. I don't think that's very fair to the public. I believe in years past, we have had town halls on these issues. If you require a zoning change to have a public notice, I feel that your UDC should as well. How is the public supposed to review a document that they cannot find without enough time to do it justice? The UDC changes how development flows through our entire city structure. It increases development costs, operation and enforcement costs, and has there been any review of these costs or flow changes by council? You just voted down the developer who wanted to put in the duplex that passed the PNC. This UDC may sidestep that process entirely. I haven't had time to review it. I don't think any of you have. How many on this council have read it? I'm impressed. I really am. I didn't think anybody would raise their hand, and so I say thank you for doing that. Legal reviewed it? They reviewed it for legal things. Multi-studio reviewed it? They reviewed it for multi-studio things. But I need for all of you to review it thinking about us, the public, the people that want to build here. Some of these new regulations are incredibly expensive. If you're trying to build affordable housing, if you're trying to build starter homes, if you're trying to stay away from the things that the code in other cities has created, like a lack of affordable housing, we need to ask ourselves, where did we get this code from and what kinds of problems are they having because of their code? Suggestions the PNC were not allowed during this process except for the last meeting. Every one of those sessions was a work session where public commentary is not invited or permitted. Keep that in mind when you think about the public feedback that was provided to the members who devoted their own time to get this done. I understand you can't please everyone, and I don't expect you to. I'm very pleased with many of the changes that I see in this UDC, but it needs vetting. It needs to be reviewed later. The final draft was not final. Missy informed them that it was ready to go. They voted, then she told them afterwards that she had made changes. She states that these were spelling and grammar changes, and that's fine, but it should have been stated upfront. And that first line, overhaul kickoff meeting, that's a typo. Somebody needs to review her work, and that is all of your responsibilities. I'm hoping that you have viewed this from the eyes of residents, not just city staff. Multi-studio didn't catch those typos, and legal didn't catch them, so you guys need to look for that. Are we changing cans to cannots? Are we changing wills to will nots? What are we doing? The redlined version would show that. We, the residents, deserve a redlined version before you vote on this. Our UDC should not be changing ordinances. I have testimony from Missy in the very first meeting that I attended in January. Missy stated, what do you have, Michelle? And this is from the video. I transcribed this directly. Michelle asked, what about the planning and zoning and commissions? And this is my stupid part here, I'm new. Is this listed anywhere else? The commissions and what they do and everything like this, is this replacing an ordinance or is this just information? Missy said, it's just in here, so it's the same. I always refer to, reference it in our UDC. It may be listed in an ordinance where they establish a planning and zoning commission, but the most recent or current standards for those going to be in the UDC. Michelle replied, okay, so that would apply to the next question that I would have about the Historic Preservation Commission. Missy said, yeah. Missy said, again, I think their establishment goes by ordinance, the establishment of that board, but their direction exists in the development code. Michelle, okay, and they are supposed to be the same. Everything is. Missy said, uh-huh, not at her head, yes. Michelle said, nothing has changed. Missy said, yes. Missy confirmed that the codes, ordinances haven't changed. I'm sorry, not the codes, but the ordinances. Nine-two twenty-five, that was a week ago. Carla Murray stated to the PNCs, I just want to clarify, so the UDC has rewriting ordinances for the boards and commissions as well, correct? Missy, correct. It's currently included in the section, excuse me, chapter two forty of the UDC Unified Development Code, the current two forty, any of those chapters will be repealed at the time of adoption of the current articles. Carla said, rewrites them significantly. That's not a little. That looks bad. It looks like Missy could be misleading somebody. I don't think that's the case, but it is very unclear as to the nature of this, and I don't think that people would be reviewing this accordingly if they thought one thing and then nine months later got told something else. That's something that council needs to review before you approve or disprove of this UDC. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Council. Carla Murray, three hundred North Campbell Street. Can I give you guys something that just, all it is, what I'm going to talk about, it names, the statutes and the UDC page numbers and all that for the things that I'm going to talk about. So, if I'm incorrect or misrepresented something, then you guys can look it up for yourselves and know what I was talking about. Okay?
Thank you.
So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna kind of, I made notes because you guys know me well enough to know that I tend to ramble, so I'm gonna try to stick to my notes. So, I'm just gonna jump right into it. There's a, there's several things that I've, there's quite a few things in the UDC that I would be concerned with. First of all, I want to say I'm glad that you guys did this. The UDC needed to be revamped, and it, it, there's a lot of really good stuff in there that corrected things that shouldn't have occurred in two thousand and eighteen, in my opinion. But there's just still some things in there, some holes in there that I think we should look at plugging prior to passing it. The first thing I would talk about is the Community Development Director. We don't have one, and that person is referenced all through the UDC as the person who makes these decisions, has the authority to make very, you know, make different decisions and all that. I mean, they have a lot of power in this UDC code, and we don't have that person. We've never had that person. In the UDC code, it says that, it gives the city administrator the power to appoint that department director position, but our charter is very clear that the power to name or whatever officers and department heads is with council, not with the city administrator, just like y'all, for Tony, Jeff, right, all that. So, to me, that's a mistake in the UDC, and I'm not sure that council would want to give up, well, it's, I don't know that you can give it up because you can't amend the charter unless the people vote to amend it. So, you've got a direct conflict right there with the UDC and the city charter. The park board, the, the state statutes are very clear on the park boards. They give the park boards exclusive control of all park funds, and the state statute is written that way that requires that. In the UDC, they're kind of moving it towards more of an advisory role in some things, like you can see on that sheet that I gave you, the park director can make some decisions on in lieu of cash and land and all that kind of stuff. So, it removes that exclusivity from the, from Parks Board, which means we're no longer in compliance with the state statute. The only way to remedy that is to repeal the Parks Board ordinance as it stands, it stood since nineteen fifty-five, not create a Parks Board by the state statute, just create an advisory board for the city. There's, there's, as I, and legal can advise on that, but everything I've researched, there's no other way to resolve that. They either have complete funds and they complete control of the funds, and they follow the state statute, or they don't. There's not any gray area with that one. Again, these are my understandings, and, and so I'm just asking you guys to look at these things. Historic Preservation Commission, state law clearly makes recommend, that it says in there, makes recommendations directly to council and for appeals to go to the Board of Adjustment. It says that in the state statute, and I've given you guys a copy of that number. The UDC changes this some, some of the HPC matters are now rooted to planning and zoning instead of council and appeals of certificates of appropriateness. They're delayed up to six months. So, basically, if you don't get your certificate of appropriateness from Historic Planning Commission and you want to appeal that, there's a clause in that UDC, and I gave you details where it is, that says that they have up to six months to negotiate that with you. So, for six months, a hundred and eighty days, there's nothing you can do. You have to continue to try to negotiate with HPC, even though they've denied your certificate of appropriateness, before you can go to the Board of Adjustments. The state law, again, is very specific about that, that any kind of appeals to Board of Adjustments have to happen in a very reasonable timeframe, and I would say that six months is not a reasonable timeframe. Those are just the most critical examples that I found. I really do have a concern that no changes were tracked from the current UDC to this proposed one. We don't really know what the differences are. I have a concern with that, but my concern, the UDC and the Development Code and all that, you know, we can get through that, right? But my concern is the ordinances in the board that are now going to reside in the UDC instead of separately as they've always resided, which is very common. Cities like the Commissions and Boards for Planning and Zoning and Historic Preservation into the UDC often because they have regular, you know, they have, they have powers within that, what things that impact the UDC. But the concern is, is that we didn't write them in the same way as the current ordinances are written. We changed their, their purpose. So, what I want to know is, is if we've got these ordinances in there, they're not part of the old UDC. They're, they stand exactly as they are on their own right now in the codes book. Why did we not have those at least redlined in the, in the current proposed UDC? Why at least have we not taken the sections that are re-describing the commissions and boards that are clearly in their own standing ordinance in the, in the city coordinates, codes and ordinances? Why aren't we at least comparing those? Because they're apples to apples. If council does not know what ordinances have changed in the UDC, and I'm not talking about just commissions and boards, all those included, if they don't know that, how do they know which ones to repeal and which ones to amend? They have to know it because otherwise we're going to have conflicting code out there. If we picked up a piece of some code or some ordinance out there and wrote it into the UPC now, and we haven't researched that, and the both of them are standing out there, we have conflicting codes. For example, I will tell you, and this isn't in your, your thing, but there's a, in the UDC somewhere, it talks about stock work orders, and you can be fined fifty to a hundred dollars a day. There's a current ordinance on the books that talks about, nothing else that's in the UDC, except that your fine is five hundred dollars a day. So, which one is it? Is it the five hundred dollars a day or is it fifty to a hundred? That stuff needs to be reconciled, and if we didn't track our changes, I don't know how you ever reconcile that. Anyway, that's, that's what I, that's what I want to talk about there, but, so it does exist. We do have a unified code. I do know that it was in major, like, stringed out, strung out chapters, and, and it didn't make a lot of sense, and I think that the way that it's been approached by staff is wonderful. It's so much easier to read, and I think there's a lot of good things in there. But I'm just gonna say it again, ironically, it's not the UDC that most of us have an issue with. It's pulling in these boards and commissions and changing the way that our government and the residents interact with our government and changing it with nobody knowing that you're changing it or what we did. Yeah, I, I, I just, that's just a concern that I have. I'm personal that I'm going to say this, and I wasn't going to bring this up, but I am going to say it. So, I've read the UDC, and I've read the old UDC. I mean, I know these codes, I know the charter, I know, I know a lot of these things. I also have learned a lot of state statutes. Pleasant Hill is very cost prohibitive for small developers. You have to have stormwater surveys stamped, you have to have architect's drawings stamped. There's all these things that you have to have. For example, on Boardman, if I want to put up a building on Boardman, it's less than ten percent increase in the permeable surface of the lot, and I, I'm going to spend, if I do it, I'm going to spend, the last estimate I had, about twenty-three to twenty-seven thousand dollars before I can go break ground just to get surveys done. It's, it's ridiculous, and I've heard this story from other developers here in town. I believe that we got a larger developer here in town that went to Harrisonville for this very reason, and I will tell you that the new UDC code is even worse. It tightens those down tighter than, there's just no wiggle room, and it's going to get more expensive to develop in Pleasant Hill. And I will tell you that I, I did an analysis, I did a review of like Columbia, Lee Summit, Peculiar, Rainmore, Belton, Harrisonville. We are by far the most prohibitive for developers of any of the cities' UDC codes, that the requirements that we have are so much stronger. Now, I'm not saying you don't need requirements, you do, but I'm saying we should have scaled requirements. It doesn't make a lot of sense to me that I have to have the same stormwater survey to put a sixteen by sixteen shed up on four lots that I do to put up a price chocolate. That doesn't make sense to me. There has to be some scaled development pro, in my opinion. That's my opinion. I'm just asking for prudence, you guys. I really am. I mean, three years, and I'm the one who's been griping the most, why has this taken three years? I mean, I've been up here every day, and I can get up here saying, why has it taken three years? But for staff to have it for three years and then turn it around in one week and expect council to vote on it is ridiculous to me. You guys need time to review this. You guys are smart people. You don't need me telling you what all's wrong with everything. You don't need John. You guys are elected because we trust you guys to make the right decisions for our city, for our city, not for me, not for John Sub, but for the city, and I can respect that. But there's no way you can do it in a week. You cannot look at the, the biggest document that this city has passed to manage our city, where we're going, where we're headed, what we're doing, what we're going to look like, and you guys pass it in a week. There are some issues, and I appreciate you guys' time so much. You know I do respect you guys, always do. If you have any questions, I mean, I've done a ton of analysis on this, so, thank you.
Anyone else? All right.
And forgive me because I did not come prepared to pick a call, although it's been interesting on what I've listened to. I guess the only thing I would say is based on what I've heard in some family landlords in the city limits. Oh, I'm sorry, my name's Jake Clemmons. I live at two seven three oh nine East Hundred Fifty Fifth Street, which is County Line Road. With what I've heard about the potential changes, the cost to develop land, et cetera, and, and I apologize, I'm late to the game, I will admit that, but I think it would be beneficial for me and perhaps other landowners and potential developers and builders if you did have a redline topping that showed the people, this is where it was, and here's where we changed it, and here's why. And then I like the idea of a town hall meeting if it's possible, and so have people, staff and everybody, because they know it inside and out, is have them stand up and answer questions and have people ask questions about why did you change this and what's this intended to improve and what's it? Why does it cost so much to put a sixteen by sixteen shed on a lot? Okay? Because I've got sheds a lot bigger than that. And I just think it's important that the city feel comfortable, the citizens of the city feel comfortable with what they're looking at as far as the development, and I can tell you this. Let's say how many years ago it was. I represented some developers that wanted to put affordable housing in Pleasant Hill, and it never got off the ground because they could not get approved the kind of houses they wanted to build on a large development of starter land, and it eventually just became economically unfeasible for them to build what I call starter houses, okay? And there's nothing wrong with them. We all started them, okay? That's what they call them. And they frankly walked away, and they had a contract on several, 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 several acres of land that had to be annexed into the city for them to do it, and it never got off the ground because they could not justify the expense and the time to build the kind of houses they wanted to build for families that were going to move to Pleasant Hill, bring their children, go to school in Pleasant Hill, hopefully make it their residence, and live here forever, and that's how a community grows. So, I would just ask if it's possible to have a town hall. I'd like to have a redline topping. I'm pretty good at reading. It may take me a while, but I'm pretty good at it, and to see what it is the changes are made and then discuss perhaps why they are, how it's going to affect my land if I ever decide to develop it and other development so we can bring some affordable housing in Pleasant Hill. I'll take all the starter homes you got because that's where a community starts, is in starter homes with low kids, going to school, and wanting to live here. So, if you would consider that, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Staff want to add anything? Do you guys have questions before we go to the?
Of course.
We're going to discuss it in the bill right now. There's a public hearing.
Do it now. All right, I'll do it now. I actually have a question for Tony because there's a lot of public works in there. Have you read the revised version and agree with everything for the public works?
I have not read.
I have not read the entire one yet.
Okay. I think that's all I have for now. I might have more than a little bit.
No, I will, I will state that I have worked with Missy and Shelby and everybody and worked through the parts of the UDC that.
Your version, your parts?
My parts of it, yes.
Excuse me. Can I get you use a microphone, please?
Sorry.
Thank you. And as far as the revised sections, you've looked at it in the past two weeks?
No, absolutely not. I have not.
Do you have concerns with? I'm just going back so that Marla can hear your answer about what Michelle asked you first about. Do you have any concerns about the public works portion of it?
It's been a long, it's been quite a while since I've actually read through some of that stuff or worked on that. I, at this time, no, I do not have any concerns with my portion of it.
Michelle, I will note that none of the sections that Tony had reviewed had changes. Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Let me note that part of the reason. So Tony's sections, the portions that pertain to infrastructure are much more, or they are smaller than they are in the UDC right now, and that is typical. Actually, what you do see with any Unified Development Code are not your design and construction. It's requirements. And so he and the engineer have been working on those separately. So all that's going to be included in the UDC for infrastructure is going to be what are road layouts, but then also just what are the requirements for infrastructure? Just services to be available, what must be designed. But once you actually get into the design, that is going to live in a separate file. And that is typical for many other cities.
And since there's been like several people asking for what they call it, the redline comparison, is, do we have, Missy, a redline comparison or anything?
Missy, do you want me to answer this one?
Go ahead.
So Brian Munch, whenever he was on the council, asked for that from the very beginning because he had previously been on a planning and zoning commission. I can tell you that this code is so substantially different that there is no redline version. If we could create it, however, what you're going to see is a whole bunch of redlines and then a whole bunch of additions. It's not changing out just little bits and pieces of it. What we were going with was a complete overhaul of the code. That is what happened in 2018 whenever the council passed the code as well. We repealed what was there before. Some of the provisions that you will see in this one relate to what was in place for the city prior to 2018. So it's not like some of this was just wrapped up and completely new. Some of it was a reversion to a previous version of a code that was working. The other piece was just making sure that it had that adherence to the comprehensive plan. Again, if it's the council's direction to do a redline, we can do it. But that does not exist. We've talked about whether it's possible to do, and it really isn't.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close.
We've moved past that. John, you've had your time. Tony, you can get one shot.
I'll make a motion to close the public, the public hearing.
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second to close the public hearing. Roll call though, please.
Councilwoman Diner?
Yes.
Councilwoman Newberry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Emo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dumber?
Yes.
All right, we are back into regular session. This time we will open public comment. If you would like to address council about something not on the agenda, please step up, state your name and address. Try to limit your remarks to three minutes, please.
I just wanted to state that I have been working for over 200 days in Milwaukee, Wisconsin over the last year. It's, and I'm finally done with that job. I've missed a lot of these meetings. I've missed a lot of business here, and I've missed a lot of people. And I do want you all to know how good it feels to come back to this town. And I do appreciate all the things that you do.
John, we just missed the YouTube livestream. We had to have 50 subscribers. We have it now.
I heard that.
We have it now. We're like at 52.
Thank you. That is much appreciated.
All right. First item for consideration tonight is a special events application. Pleasant Hill Booster Club for the Homecoming Fireworks Display.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city has received an application from the Booster Club to discharge fireworks on, during, excuse me, before, during, and after the homecoming football game on Friday, September 26th. They will be, excuse me, these fireworks will just, will begin at approximately 6:45 PM with a pre-game introduction following every home touchdown and the conclusion of the game. The, excuse me, the Booster Club does have a licensed commercial fireworks display person, I'm lacking their word, so.
It's called a shooter.
Thank you.
Anyone from the Booster Club here?
Want to add anything?
Nope. This has been our tradition the last couple of years, and I think everybody really enjoys it. We used to do it for senior nights because we kept losing, so.
Microphone, please.
Oh, sorry. I don't, I'm new. I'm just here for the fireworks.
She has headphones on. She doesn't want to hear.
We've done it the last, I don't know, four or five years. I think everybody enjoys it. Even the visiting teams love it. They sit and watch after the game. We used to do it for senior nights, so we kept losing, so we don't do that anymore. But yeah, I think it's kind of a cool thing to do. I don't know that many other towns do a firework display. I mean, I at least, that's not where I teach, so I think it's a beneficial thing for the city, so.
All we ask is you guys put the information out there, please.
We can do that. I will make an episode. We do that, yes.
So that everybody knows there's going to be fireworks.
I don't know that everybody who follows the Booster Club page, but.
We can help get that out there.
I'll put it on our social media as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, one other thing, I'm sorry, I did not mention. I did speak with the fire department regarding this application. They did state that there could possibly be an application and/or a site plan that's required. So if you could just ask your display person to contact the fire department and make sure it's met, please.
Questions from council?
No.
Do I have a motion to approve the, oh, sorry. Does anybody from the public like to speak on this before we? All right. Do I have a motion to, for the special events application for the Pleasant Hill Booster Club Homecoming Fireworks Display?
I'll make a motion to approve the application for the special events for fireworks at the homecoming game.
I second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is a proposed change to Chapter 52 dash two seven B regarding safe rooms for group B occupancies.
Thank you, sir. So recently, staff has become aware that in the 2018 International Building Code, there is a requirement that storm shelters be constructed for buildings within group B occupancy with an occupant load of 50 or more. So a group B occupancy are, include, but are not limited to, educational facilities through grade 12, religious worship places, and daycare facilities. So what this means is that if any of those types of occupancies increase their area, so if they do a building addition or anything else, they would be required to install HD in a safe room for the entire occupancy of the building, which can increase costs and maybe discourage further expansion of those types of structures. So what staff is recommending, this also goes along with neighboring communities, is that we amend our International Building Code to include a section, Section 423.4.3, that allows for group B occupancy campuses to, that would normally require a storm shelter for an addition to, the addition is less than 25% of the total coverage. They will be exempt from that requirement. So this has to be, according to state statute, it does have to be on record with the city clerk for a period of 90 days. So for the next 90 days, this will be posted in the lobby of City Hall, also available online for viewing or any questions or comments.
I'm sorry. Did you say it was 2021 or 2018, I'd be surprised.
2018.
So you'll bring this back after 90 days, correct?
Yes, sir. And if there's any, if we receive any concerns within, those will be addressed at that time as well.
Are there any upfront questions from council? Anybody from the public want to speak on this proposed change? You say it'll be 90 days. Where's it posted?
It will be in the lobby of City Hall. I'll also ask Kylie to put it on the website as well for viewing.
Thank you very much. All right. Next item is Bill 25 dash 31, An Ordnance of the City of Pleasant Hill, Missouri, Repealing Certain Sections of Chapter 240 of the Pleasant Hill Code of Ordinances Relating to the Development of Land and Enacting in lieu, uh, in lieu of, not lean, Therefore, New Articles to be Known as the Unified Development Code, UDC, of the City of Pleasant Hill, Missouri. Anything you want to add?
No.
Okay. Planning and zoning, anything you guys want to add? Additional questions from council?
Why do you always look at me?
Because you are, that's where I'm starting, left to right. No, that's right to left. Sorry. I'm looking the wrong way. They're left.
No, I don't have any more questions, I don't think.
I do have a question. So if we wanted to delay the passage of this, what kind of an impact is that going to cause? I mean, is it just a delay?
It's just a delay. It doesn't have any impact right now as we currently have a UDC in effect.
And if we do delay it, Pat, is there something you would like to do to make, or just, do you just want more time?
Well, I mean, I've read it, well, I've, I've read 168 pages, so I've pretty much read it. I, and I came here tonight with the assumption that I was going to vote yes and pass it. But I will tell you that after hearing some concerns, I'm, I'm wondering if we shouldn't have a town hall. To give the community more of an opportunity to answer some questions or have their questions answered. But I will tell you, I've been the big proponent of getting this UDC approved and fight along, so.
I kind of like the town hall idea also. I know it's, I just kind of like the idea.
I agree with the town hall.
I think it would just give us more time to review everything, which I know I have because I'm on planning and zoning, but I mean, I, we've waited three years. What's, you know, I just want to make sure it's done right. And that's our responsibility is to make sure it's done right. I'll second that.
I will just say to, and I'm not, I'm not saying to throw you under the bus, but to quote you, Captain Newberry.
Oh, yes.
We have boards and commissions to do that kind of late work for us.
Yes.
And that we should, as best we can, follow what they are recommending to us.
Yes.
They have done their due diligence. I know I have read through it. I'm going to tell you, there's probably things that at some point a lawyer's going to challenge. It'll probably be changed. Things are going to come up that are going to have to be changed. But you can never, at the end of the day, have any foolproof code. I am, I am more than happy with this. We have dealt with a lot of the things, questions that have had over time as far as park boards and different boards and commissions and stuff like that. And, I mean, we can, we can have a town hall and if, you know, 12 people show up and there's 12 changes, it all goes back for approval stuff again.
Right. And I accept that.
I just, like I said.
And I'm on the planning and zoning. I know how hard they all work. I was pretty much just the shadow there, but, because they did a lot of work, and I know they did. I'll just leave it at that.
What about you, Jackie? What do you want to?
I, I'm, I don't really care either way. I mean, I think each way has its.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the UDC as it stands for the simple fact that I have read 168 pages with it out of the 191. I'm very comfortable with that. I'm also very comfortable with our planning and zoning commission or council board, whatever you want to call it. But I have a lot of faith in the work that you guys did. I have a lot of respect and faith in the members itself, so. That's my motion.
You made a motion.
I made a motion.
A second then.
So I have a motion to approve Bill number 25 dash 31, An Ordnance of the City of Pleasant Hill, Missouri, Repealing Certain Sections of Chapter 240 of the Pleasant Hill Code of Ordinances Relating to the Development of Land and Enacting in lieu of, Therefore, New Articles to be Known as the United, not that, Unified Development Code, UDC, of the City of Pleasant Hill. Motion and second. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilwoman Diner?
Yes.
Councilwoman Newberry?
No.
Councilwoman Emo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dumber?
No.
With a two-two vote, it will then go to a vote of the mayor.
A vote yes. Bill number 25 dash 31 passes, vote three to two. So with that said, I know that, I don't remember who I talked to, Shelby or Nikki, which one have you told me was at least summit? Every January looks at theirs.
I indicated that Raymore does theirs. Every January, planning and zoning meets go over. Here are easy A applications that have occurred over the past year from variance to the code reviewing sections that maybe have had, just needed clarification over the years that the development department has seen. And so they basically go through it every single year and then just make a revision each year.
Missy, I would like to do that.
Noting.
Doesn't have to be January, but January, February. Just put it on their agenda.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And Z, I added work for you.
Kim, will that be open then to the public then?
Yes.
Comments? I think that's very important.
All right. Staff reports. Missy.
A couple of things. Number one, I had a pre-construction meeting today in the Little Blue Valley Sewer District. They have a major plant expansion going on at our facility south of town. So we'll look for that work to begin towards the beginning of October. What's it called? Everybody's recall, I'm sorry, I don't know what it's called. It's October 6th. And then they'll be initiating that work soon after that. With that, they will also be utilizing some adjacent property that is currently in the city. It's currently city property that is unrealized. We, I believe Shelby gave it for me.
They have, councilwoman approved the sale of the land at the last meeting. It just hasn't been executed yet, so I let them know that they have the ability to access that land while we're finalizing those details.
Yes. So they will be staging there. They will be putting a fence or barrier around with a. Yes, so they will be staging there, they will be putting a fence or barrier around with a screen on it, so if you see that going up, just know that that's what it is for, to protect their equipment and supplies there. They were also made aware of soft, use softball baseball that does happen at the field, and it was noted that extra precaution would be taken to make sure all gates and fences were closed at the end of each workday. The other, I guess, exciting thing that came through today was, we did receive an application for a, I want to say a bird scooter rental type business within the city limits, so if you see for electric scooters around the town, just note that it is an active business, but as soon as they get their stuff, they, they do know that they cannot place those units until they have a business license.
Amy.
After our last meeting, I submitted our property tax for certification with Cass County and Jackson County, and we should have our draft audit tomorrow, so hopefully they'll do a presentation in the next council meeting. And then doing some of helping Jody out with some payroll and more complex, we should be gone.
Jeff, pool season is close, and starting this next week, we're gonna be doing some repairs, including removing the pool deck and fixing the broken pipes to try and get that problem solved, so if you see a lot of action over there, that's what's going on. We've also started our maintenance prep for getting ready for the upcoming fall winter seasons, as far as facilities, going through and checking units and things of that nature. At the complex, we are installing a railing next to the, the new slab there by the baseball fields, third base side. It's not a code requirement, because we are out of the limit, but if we're gonna be able to put dams there, which is just a safety precaution to protect us. We're also constructing a berm over on the west side of the west field, that way there's no trash debris and it's blowing from our property under the neighbors and things of that nature, and it creates a visiting, a barrier between the two, so it's not so visible. We are getting ready to remodel, or not remodel, but clean out and do a small remodel of the upper concession stand, because fall seasons are upon us, and starting next week, we'll have live football games on that west field, so the upper concession stand will actually allow us to serve on that side of that, people have a good oversight to do that. And we've got a lot of the signage up at the complex, and we've got a lot of the park put up tomorrow, so starting to see some of those changes.
You have a meeting tomorrow, correct?
Park board meeting, correct.
Supposed to be one or two other people that were interested in park board coming. I just need from them what they want to do to fill that open spot. Need a recommendation, so. I know that one guy coming tomorrow is a recs program dad, so.
Okay, very good.
Alright.
Can I ask Jeff?
Yes.
I know I've asked you this before, and I'm sorry, COVID brain. Restrooms down there, I'm not geographically challenged, but down by the pickleball court, the football field down there, soccer, whatever, is there plans for restrooms down there?
Eventually there will be, at this time right now, we don't have anything, there's, there's not money for that, so that's something we're gonna have to start developing plans for.
Tony.
Yeah, Seven Highway Waterline Project is moving along, they are finishing up the Ripple Loop, so from Seven Highway back to Ripple High, or Ripple Road. They run into quite a bit of rock back in that section, so they're betting on rock, trying to do a waterline for it. I think Jake told me that they had maybe sixty feet left before they could do that high in there. They had some issues with the PSI test, and a couple of issues with the back D tests on that line, so we haven't, we haven't opened it up to the system yet. As soon as we get those back D tests back, they'll be able to start doing the service tie-ins and the street crossing and stuff like that. We have the three lift stations that we are gonna be redoing this year. The Hanes got ahold of me this week and said they are being shipped sometime in the first part of this week, so by the end of the week, we should have those lift stations in hand, and then it'll be just getting the schedule with the contractor to get those put in place. We are working on over the streets overlay list for this fall, trying to get that finalized, and then the guys have started doing some crack ceiling, getting ready for some spring micros功夫 as well.
I have something, but I'm gonna circle back to it. I have one thing, I'm gonna circle back to it. We have a captain in lieu of a chief tonight. Big shoes to fill.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah. Alright.
So we have our annual touch a truck event coming up this Saturday down at the fairground, that'll kick off probably around eight o'clock, it's gonna be a little early time, but everybody doesn't use that. We'll start setting up, have participants coming to set up, and there we have a pretty big list this year, so I'm, fingers crossed they all show up, but I've been emailing and conversing with those all day today and over the weekend, so should be a great turnout on Saturday. Our officers are gonna be conducting range qualifications this next week, during this week actually, starting tomorrow, to get that part of our post, annual post stuff taken care of. Our renovations, animal shelter is going really well, the police department, that building doesn't look anything like it did on day one, I can tell you that, it looks amazing, those guys are, they're over there really whipping it on and getting it cleared out, and starting on, on getting things going, so, that's awesome. Citizens Academy's still ongoing, we have another renovation of that this Thursday. We have a Veterans Outreach Event I want to talk about, so on the seventh of November, at Memorial Building, Kansas City VA and a bunch of other agencies are gonna come in and do a Veteran Outreach Event, not just for members of our community, but for any veterans that reside within the county of Cass. I did not know this until getting involved with the Veteran CIT Committee, but we have the third largest population in Cass County veterans in St. Louis area. So that's, that's pretty cool, so that should be a big event coming up on that day. Some stuff we're looking at, there's a program through Mid-America Regional Council called First Impact, and it's a program that helps educate team, new team drivers in kind of the ways of, of the world along the road. I'm gonna go out and take a look at that following Saturday, see what that program is about, and perhaps make a recommendation to the chief on that deal. Our Mark Grant that was presented a couple of weeks ago, they have that for action up at the regional office, so we can order the two solar signs, two solar speed limit signs, we'll obviously defer to your discretion or whether you'd like those. We have some recommendations, we can talk about that once we get them ordered, but that's, that's moving forward. And then highway safety grants, we got approved for twenty-twenty-six, the end of last year's September thirtieth, all finals, we have a submit by November fifteenth, I'll take care of that, we should be good to go. And the chief will be back Wednesday.
Just because there's a lot of people in the room, this Veterans Outreach, if you guys know veterans, even if they don't seem to have any problems, get them there. We've got a lot of veterans, not just in this community, but the surrounding ones that live at or below the poverty level, they don't understand their benefits, they don't understand all the programs out there to help. Veterans are not the best group to ask for help. We tend to think we can take care of everything and internalize stuff, but I can, I can speak from an experience in this community. Our police officer and a group of veterans, they have, they have, not only did they reach out, they helped a veteran in this community, who now gives a lot back to this community, and it's important. So if you guys know veterans, even if they seem like they're okay, get them out to it, it's.
Yes, sir, and it is, it is, there's no registration fee, it's just a free event. Come on out, point them in the right direction, for whatever reason.
Stand around and tell war stories.
That's it.
Try to get them help with anything. Alright, Kylie.
I don't have anything major to report, just normal operations for me.
We have a lot of stuff put out there.
Yeah, I mean, everyone's got their goals now, I just have to advertise them now.
Nikki.
I'm kind of staying with Kylie, just wearing a couple of hats right now and working through just, I mean, all the things that we have going on, so nothing additional to add that anybody else hasn't said.
Well, Shelby, next time you address council, you're gonna be just a citizen?
Just a citizen, yeah, I have nothing further. Yeah, I, I'm having my out, so, yeah, thank you.
Were you able to get that document, or will you be able to?
No, but I will get it to you.
Alright. So Nikki, Tony, Missy, whoever else on the city staff can help with this. We need to rattle the cages of everybody we know at MoDOT. I haven't seen somebody work on this sidewalk thing in over a week. Hasn't been a lot of rain, and my biggest concern is, there's a lot of just random open areas, especially around some of our busier places. Cars are gonna drive off the edge and get damaged if they're not paying attention, and I can tell you, I've seen those workers at two other projects for MoDOT, and I know it, because the one angry guy stands out here and yells at cars. I'd like to know when they're gonna, what the holdup is.
I will have a meeting Wednesday, we have a meeting every week at eleven with them, so I'll have to find out. I've been gone for about a week, so I guess they're gonna, they left too.
I mean, I think it's been over a week now that I've seen them working.
Yeah.
You know, I get there's that section they left, because we were doing waterline stuff, but there's just a lot of open places in that sidewalk. So, yeah, if we could get on them and ask them what the deal is, and maybe they can get on their subcontractor, and not real happy that that project was supposed to be done in like June, and then it was July, and then it was November. And just like I said when we got that email, they're sending those workers to other projects. I'm tired of Seven Highway being the cone farm and the barrel farm for two summers in a row. Yeah, great, yeah. We get to have floating cones this time. So, thank you, I appreciate that.
I'll check on it.
Anything else from council?
The only thing I have is, I talked to you about that earlier, was on the Seven Highway Bridge, Green Bridge, Silver Bridge, whatever you want to call it, I know there's a lot of public interest in seeing what we can do about saving, salvaging, moving it, whatever, relocating it. I don't know if there's any way that we could start a committee or somebody to look into that, to see if it's feasible to be done. I know there's been some people in the community that have made some personal contacts with, I don't want to go in and name anybody today, but but I know that people have done some personal things, contacts, but they can't do anything unless they know what the, where the city wants to go with it, you know, to have some backing on it, so. I think it's something we need to be proactive about, whether or not we want to look at it, whether we want to be involved in it, or if we say bye-bye, very ready.
I think we have some uses for it, but I'm with you, there's gotta be some kind of a community fundraiser, money come from somewhere. Can't spend two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to a million dollars of city money to move a bridge, to make it into a boardwalk.
I just think that we have to decide whether it's better for us to be in front of it than trying to play catch-up and say, oh, wish we would, should've, would've, could've. If it's something that we want to do, we need to be doing it.
Yes. How about a town hall?
I'm, I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with that. Alright. Do I have a motion to go into closed session, Jeremy, do you still need to say this?
Yes, please.
Need a closed session pursuant to RSMO six-ten dash zero-two-one-one for legal actions litigation and attorney-client communications. Do I need to add to real estate, or is it just legal?
Let's do real estate also.
Adding RSMO six-ten oh-two-one-two for discussion of real estate.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session for RSMO six-ten dash zero-two-one-one and for legal actions litigation and attorney-client communications, and RSMO six-ten dash zero-two-one-two for discussion of real estate.
I second.
Motion second, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Niner?
Yes.
Councilwoman Newberry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Eno?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dumber?
Yes.
Alright, closed session. Chris, don't leave anyone to talk to you. You don't get out that easy. I need a favor.